Hi.
I'm pleased to be here today. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, before we get started. Chris? Chris?
Yeah. I wanted to say that for this meeting because I got feedback that people in the audience have a hard time hearing and Scott said the next meeting we'll put the microphone so that everybody can be heard. So I thought I would just sit here so we'd listen to this issue this meeting. But if you want me to go back, I can. It's just that the audience couldn't be back until you came here, is what I was told.
Um, well, how about for this meeting, we just speak up so that everybody can hear us and then I don't know that we need to necessarily have your seat over there.
Okay. Would you rather be over there?
I would.
All righty.
Sure. Thank you.
You got it.
Um, Katie Graves sends her apologies. She can't make it tonight. She's got a personal matter to attend to this evening. But for now, I would like to start with public input one. Is there anybody that would like to come for public input one?
That's you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi. I'm Caleb Kershuvall.
There's a podium over here. Um, you have three minutes to speak. Direct your comments to the board president. That is me. Um, the board will listen, may not necessarily interact or discuss the items, but please do not discuss personnel or individual students. Know that you are being videotaped and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Caleb Kershuvall. And I'd like to address the parking issue or I'd like to see the parking issue addressed. Uh, I don't know what's been done in the past. I don't know where it stands in moving forward. I don't know if it's solely a school responsibility, something done in conjunction with the town. I don't know if there's a committee on board that is addressing it, trying to figure out solutions that they can present. And I'd just like to see it get addressed because I hear it's been an issue for a long time. Certainly has been in my few years here. So I don't know what the changes that were done last year, how they were implemented, whether they were on advice from the school solely through the town. Should I be addressing just you? Should I be addressing the village as well? Were those changes recommendations here? I sort of like to find out so I can sort of help with a solution. That's it.
Thank you very much. Um, some of the things that you brought up, I can address. Would you want to go ahead? Go ahead, Tommy John.
You know what? I'm sorry, Tommy John, hang on. Caleb, only because I'm, you know, personally, he has two children in the elementary school, so he's talking from the element- an elementary building perspective. Am I correct there?
Well, yes, except that Park Don Jermaine, uh, which stops at nine o'clock in the morning and it seems a really simple solution for 10 spots is to have it go nine twenty, nine thirty. That's asking the town for 20 minutes and it allows 10 people, just this is only one, that has 10 people to attend morning program. I came and I got a ticket, trying to have a great day with my kids.
Tommy John, I'll call what you want to do.
Sure. Caleb, thank you for coming. They, uh, the streets of the jurisdiction of the village of Sag Harbor and we were concerned when we saw the sights, uh, signs go up and, and we addressed the village and, um, they felt strongly to keep the signs up. I would encourage you to ask them what you just asked us. We, and we are in conversation with them. We, we really would like to work together with the village. I was the former liaison to the village. Chris Tice is going to be the, the future liaison to the village. And we also have a transportation committee to, um, to see, you know, what we can do as far as parking, at least onsite and then in conjunction with the village as well. But that is, is where it came from.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input one? Come on up.
Hi. My name is Aura Winarek. I'm the president of the PTSA here at Pearson. Um, so this is a follow-up to a follow-up. As most of you know, I attended the goals workshop here. I think it was July 25th, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
And discussing the PTSA's desire to advocate for, um, revision of student government practices and fundraising policies here at Pearson. And it was a great meeting, by the way, and I really appreciated that format. So the follow-up is that, um, we really would like to see that adopted as an official goal, um, which I understand may be done here tonight. We did write a letter on August 25th, which I'll just sort of give you a little overview of. So I understand you, you sent out the draft goal for community feedback. And so, um, the feedback that, that we are offering you is that, um, that, uh, da-da-da-da-da, we would, um, that we are hoping that you consider adding, adding goals to goal number two, which goal number two is raise district-wide accountability to promote student achievement and reinforce school success. So to that goal, goal number two, we are asking, uh, two things. One, to improve the educational goals and current practices of student government slash student council by incorporating professional training, training to create a high-functioning educational student government program. And number two is to revise the official school re- school fundraising policies. There's a few of them. To be compliant with existing school policies and NYSED regulations and implement guidelines for students and advisors to develop successful fundraising plans. And as, as also spoken about at the goals meeting, we, we offered to, um, look into professional assistance training and, um, from an article in the paper, Stephen Espach, the president of the Lions Club, has offered to come in and assist with that training. And he's here tonight to give you a little spiel on what, what he feels he can offer to us. And just to, just to add to this, what we're not, we don't want to reinvent the wheel here. We're not asking for a whole new scene. Basically, we just want to align these two things, the fundraising and the student government thing, with what I call like the big, the big hen in the sky. You know, there are, there's, there are two organizations. One is American Student Government Association and there's New York State Council on Leadership and Student Activities. They're, they're full of information and, and things that are available to us. All we have to do is sort of, you know, get under their wing and we're, we're good to go. So, um, and PTSA is here to continue to support and help write policies. We'll get in the classroom with the kids, whatever we need to do to make it successful work. All, all onboard. So that is, that's what we're here tonight. We're to ask you to officially adopt our thing on your thing.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input one?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Stephen Espach. I'm the president of the Sag Harbor Lions Club. I'm a graduate of Pearson class 76. Some of you may remember, remember my dad was Bob Espach, a local attorney, and my mom, Dorothy Espach, who taught here from 1964 through 1986 or something like that. I'm in the second term as president of the Lions Club and I'm also the chair of the Board of Directors. I represent 28 men and women who are members of the club from our community encompassing many different occupations. I'm also the secretary to the Lions District, which covers all of Suffolk County. I've read the article, um, in the Sag Harbor Express by Christine Sampson titled PTSA to Sag Harbor School Board, Revisit Fundraising and Train Student Leaders. I responded, as Aura mentioned, and then I also followed up with an email to her. Um, and let, just letting her know that the Sag Harbor Lions would be interested in assisting with this program. The Lions' mission statement is to empower volunteers to serve their communities, meet humanitarian needs, encourage peace, and promote international understanding through Lions Club. And our motto is simply, "We Serve." Uh, we're a service club registered with the IRS as a 501(c)(3) and we're also registered with the Attorney General's Charity Bureau. The credos that I created for the club this year are be a voice, not an echo, and if the plan doesn't work, change the plan, not the goal. So the Sag Harbor Lions feel that we are qualified to assist the Board of Education and the PTSA with these plans since we employ governance as an NGO and we also are responsible to our parent organization, Lions Club International, through our constitution and bylaws. We're required to balance our charitable trust account each year, making sure that all the funds we raise from the public must be distributed back to the public good. Any of the money that we receive, uh, or rather, let me say, the administrative money that we use to keep our club going is all raised through our personal dues and then we also pay them off the ladder to International as well. The funds we raise are donated to many local, county, state, and international causes such as, and I'll put this one right up front, the three scholarships that we give each year to Pearson High School graduates. Under my leadership, the club is planning new community service projects this fiscal year by working on plans for early childhood eye screenings, adult to, adult type two diabetes awareness, and other community involvement, including, we hope, this project. The membership and I feel that the Sag Harbor Lions are qualified to assist the Board of Education and the PTSA regarding this issue. Each member in our club can bring a skill to the table to help our students in learning about fundraising responsibility and the governance due to our background and length of steady service to the village since 1954. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input one? All right. Um, because two of our three public input one people brought up the goals, um, I would like to, and it is on our agenda for discussion tonight. I would like to make a motion that we bring the item for discussion of goals up before superintendent's court so we can discuss it while they're here and, and then they can go if they'd like.
So move.
Second? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we will open up for discussion on the goals. So you should have in front of you a copy of the draft goals that was put out. As liaison to the PTSA, I did ask Aura to come and speak at public input one for the record because she had sent us an email previously. I'll get this that way.
Sorry.
That has, um, what I thought looked like a reasonable request. So, um, in her email on which she just reiterated here, she said, under goal number two, as raising district-wide accountability to promote student achievement and reinforce school success, um, the PTSA is hoping that we will add these two tasks to the list. The first one is improve the educational goals and current practices of student government and student council by incorporating professional training to create high-functioning educational student government program. The second one is revise the official school fundraising policies. She said it's plural. To be compliant with existing school policies and current NYSED regulations and implement guidelines for students and advisors to develop successful fundraising plans. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we add those two underneath goal number two. As, as worded, I think the wording is fine. So at this time, um, I'll make that motion. Any second?
Um, can we, we have a discussion?
Second?
Do you want to discuss?
Oh, yeah.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll discuss before we vote, but the motion's on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tommy John. All right. So, um, discussion will start and go around. Susan?
Yeah, no, I totally agree. Um, in fact, I was surprised that it wasn't on here after the goals meeting. So I think there was widespread agreement in the room, was my sense, on both those items. The only two things I would add is under number one, the, the way this is written sort of implies that the only way we're improving is by incorporating professional training. And I just wonder, especially having had a child who was a student, um, body vice president, the feedback I heard, well, I just heard some feedback from him and other students about the program. So I wonder if we can't include some kind of evaluation component or student feedback where we also hear from the students about how to improve it. So in other words, you know, of course, doing what they're saying, but exploring what, what else needs to be done other than just the professional development piece. Because I think what I was hearing, and I guess this is younger students, but they didn't feel like they had a lot of autonomy. They felt like there was a, a plan was already set in place and so I think there were things that they wanted to do and improve and what have you and, um, so I think there is room for improvement, was my impression.
I think that's why it's on, why it's been brought to our attention.
Right. But I'm just saying, it's like to somehow, that is part of this process, that we get student feedback on how to improve it. You see what I'm saying?
I, I do. And I'm wondering if part of, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn. Go ahead.
No, that's it?
No, it, it's, I'm, Robert's rules. No, it, it's, it's, it's going to be a lot more efficient if we let everybody speak. So I'll-
I like the back and forth. But I'm just saying, is it some kind of evaluation and student feedback component is all I'm saying I would like to see added?
Would you like to make a motion on rewording this? Or are you just, that's part of the discussion?
Yeah, it's just, can't we discuss and figure out how to reword it?
Okay. Tommy John, you want to speak?
No more discussion.
Well, I want to thank, uh-
I'm just trying to equal discussion. I don't want a little back and forth between Susan and I. I don't want to hear from everybody.
Aura Winarek and, and the PTSA for, for being involved and bringing this to us. I'm a government person. I teach government. I think that this is, this is really great. And if we can empower students in our schools, it certainly will enhance our education and their experience here. I, I like the websites. I like the organization that, that you sent to us. I think, um, it, that part may not be appropriate for the goals that, you know, we can get our students involved in that to see what other schools do and the areas in which they can have control over their student body. I, I like it. I, you know, as far as professional training, I, I think that indicates for the hired staff. But I think we, we would be well-served to send our students to some, some training or experiences or, or like some of these conferences as well to, to, uh, to, to get educated, particularly our, our younger, uh, our younger grades. I, I think, you know, building this forward, moving forward is, is the way to go with it. Again, I like it. As far as, as school fundraising policies, I, I know, um, I know the State Controller's Office has, has some, uh, very clear guidelines, recommendations. We were audited. They did take a look at our, our, um, extracurricular activities. So I'm not, I, I think that number two might be best for the policy committee to take a look at that. Because, you know, to make this a goal, I'm, I'm not quite sure, like, you know, the, the parts of the policy that need to be changed. Maybe a goal could be to review the policy unless I'm not reading it. Yeah. But at that part, I, I think we should probably send that to the policy committee for a quick turnaround. And, and that itself could, it could be the goal.
January?
Yeah, actually, I, I agree with Tommy John. Thanks for coming, Aura. I would make a, a, a motion to amend paragraph one, student council by incorporating professional and student training. Because I agree, because we want the students to be trained as well, not just the, um, advisors. And at turn number two, this is a legal requirement that we are required to conduct and, um, seeing as I'm going to be on the policy committee, this is something we will tackle. I don't think it should be on the goals as it is a legal requirement and to go to the policy committee.
So, uh, did I hear a motion on the floor to revise the wording for number one?
Yes.
Okay. So can I get a, so, a second for the motion on the floor? Revised the wording to read, "By incorporating professional and student training."
Um, point of order?
Yeah.
Is that what we're supposed to say now?
Yes.
Oh, God. Sorry. I believe they already do student trainings and they know they go on retreats and so I guess part of this would be helpful to hear from the administrators about, you know, this comes all back to, we need feedback.
Okay. So point of information for the student government, are the students sent off to retreats and training? What type of professional development do the students receive?
I think it's been somewhat inconsistent, um, but you do have a, uh, you have a change in the student government advisor that's on the agenda this evening. And I know that the person who's up before you, uh, has already contacted other school districts to see what their procedures and protocols are, um, regarding training and other matters. So that's part of, uh, his homework, if you will, of stepping into this new position. So that's sort of where we're at right now. The former person, former advisor had been in that role for a number of years. So, that's real.
So there's no official training requirement for the kids?
No.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm just saying to bring this in, we, uh, I think they already had stuff. I knew my son did stuff and they went to-
Remember, there's two different positions. I was just referring to the high school student government. There's also a middle school, uh, student government advisor, um, who is a person who was in that role last year.
Um, so there was a motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
All right. So let's just have discussion on the motion on the floor. Um, this time we'll start at this end since we have to start the discussion on this now. So, well, go ahead.
I, I can't weigh in on that without having the other questions that I had about this. So can I ask those questions or should I just not weigh in because I, I don't have my questions answered?
Now, what questions do you have?
In terms of, a, a couple. In terms of the first goal, which I think is a really good one, I didn't understand when it says educational, um, when it says training, was that student and advisor training? And if that's what was meant, so just to get it clarity, I'm going to just ask this the author behind me. That was, you meant for the students and the, and the advisor?
Can I speak? Is that what you meant by that?
I, I, I agree 100% that, that, that it should say student as well. And if I could vote, I would vote yes. Yes, I mean, by all means, the goal here is to empower the students, so we don't want to leave the students out at any juncture.
Right.
So yes, they should be included in, in that paragraph.
That makes sense. So then my question was, do, do advisors get training on this or they kind of love to do their own research when they take over the position? How does that work?
Currently, uh, advisors, depending on the position, I really can't think of positions that, in the co-curricular appointments where training is part of the position.
I didn't think so, right.
So, uh, I was going to mention both with regard to the valuation comments and the training comments, although both sound wonderful in principle, that could carry some contractual
Right.
implications.
So, so-
That's not to say they're not good ideas. I'm just saying.
Right. So I, I want to ask that because we don't want to put a goal on if our contracts don't allow us to fulfill the goal currently. So we just have to be sensitive to that. And then is this goal more of a building level goal or a district goal? Only because it is, unless, does it affect the elementary school as well?
I'm not aware of how the elementary school is structured. Maybe Ms. Raino saw it.
They don't have.
They don't, right? So that's what I'm asking. I think that this is, I think this idea is really good and it's a long time coming to do something more formal. I would just suggest we vet out what language we can have that meets our contractual agreements and also that this perhaps might be a building level goal and not a district-wide goal. Because it doesn't really, doesn't really play for the whole district. That's my suggestion.
Okay. Alex?
I think it looks good and I think the change that, that January suggested is a good one. So it's, as I understood, professional and student training.
Can I amend that motion?
Yes.
Because I agree with Chris about the, um, professional training and the contract obligations. So can we say professional oversight and student training?
What does professional oversight mean?
That the people that are going to be overseeing it are professional.
Well, they're advisors. They're hired to be advisors, right?
But what I'm saying, I mean, I, I want them to get some sort of education, even if it's just working, you know, with, with the Lions Club, like that seems, or, or Jeff, you said he'll have to look at and see what other schools do.
I, yeah, I think that I spoke to the person who's before you tonight for the recommendation and he's more than amenable to take advantage of whatever's offered. So I think there's two ways to look at it. What's actually going to happen and then the contractual language. And my comment only pertains before to the contractual language.
Did you want to add more, Alex?
No, thank you.
Stephanie?
Okay, I'm confused. Is the high school student council officers elected already for the 2017-18 year?
Yes.
Yes.
Are the middle school student council?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the class, not the class officers from middle school. Not all of the class officers. Sixth grade hasn't been done.
Has seventh through 12th?
Seventh and eighth have?
Not all the high school classes.
So whatever we impli- yeah, eh, 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 from what I understand, Aura, what is my son?
Sophomore.
And what is he? What a position does he hold in the high school student council?
At this moment, nothing.
But was, he was elected in June-
Last year, he was, um-
For this year, am I not correct?
Can we not talk about individual students?
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, strike the record. The only, what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, is it too late to impact this correctly? That's, that's my question. Are, are the changes that we're suggesting, which I would want to see implemented now for the 17-18 school year, too late because the train left the tracks?
I don't, I don't believe so anymore.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
And then the only thing that I don't understand, January, the way I read this sentence, "By incorporating professional training for administrators and students." If you write, "By incorporating professional student training," to me, that reads, "The students are doing the training." Or am I crazy?
I, but I, I have a suggestion. I'm just kind of hearing, hearing all this, I, this that's bouncing around and also taking into consideration some contractual language and keeping in mind that, um, the, the purpose of the board is to, um, give direction and tell what we want done, not necessarily how we want it done. I would like to make a motion to strike "by incorporating professional training." And so if that's what it takes to get it done, then that's what gets done. So that it reads, "Improve the educational goals and current practice of student government council to create a high-functioning educational school, student government program." And then that leaves it wide open.
Perfect.
That they can, they can get it done however they want done, but this is the result we want. So I'd move that we strike the phrase, "By incorporating professional training" from number one. Can I get a second on the motion?
Second.
All right. Discussion on striking out "by incorporating professional training." Go for it.
Oh, no, I agree with that.
Discussion. Any discussion?
My only, okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll say, my only question is, because I, I think that makes sense. It's more general. You know, with any goal, the question becomes, how does it get measured? How do you know whether you've achieved it or not? So I would just love to get an idea, you know, based on all of the administrative administration running in. You know, based on this is a goal, how would you think we could measure whether we achieved it or not?
I think, I don't think it would be a quantitative measure. I think it would be a qualitative look at, um, the actions of student government, the types of issues they were involved in, the numbers of meetings they had, quality of those meetings.
It's anecdotal in nature, but we would have a temperature.
Kids' feedback.
Okay, that makes sense.
Tommy John?
Training, for lack of a better word, or, or the experience could be, um, the, the association that you sent us and I'm, I'm motioning over to the president of the PTSA, the New York State Council on Leadership and Student Activities. We can get our group, if you choose to do this because you're the how with it. Um, it could be something like that to, in addition to speaking with other schools, it could be going a bit more statewide. And there's a conference there, perhaps they would be, again, the younger kids with five-year.
Susan, did you want to add to the discussion?
Yeah, I do. I just think that isn't, the whole point is to try to improve the experience and professionalize it. So I agree with what you said in terms of Tina. On the other hand, maybe, maybe that's something that people have identified has been something that's lacking. So, uh, and I agree with Chris about having something that's measurable. I just, I said it at the beginning and I'll say it again. I just think that another qu-
I just think that another qualitative or another measure would be something I would like to see us do upfront and that is survey the students. I can't say that enough. I just wish we would reach out and hear back more from the students more about what they would like to see improved, ask kids who served in the past, the current kids, and then we can, you know, monitor those, that feedback as it moves forward.
And I think crossing that out of the language allows for more freedom to do those sorts of things. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor, which is to cross out by incorporating professional training? All those in favor?
I'm in.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. So the motion that was above that was on the adoption of these two as amended and I think we got to January, right?
Yes, and I wanted to strike two.
Okay, so you want to amend the motion to have only one be a goal?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor that only one becomes a goal and two. Do you want to just, should we just take them separately? Okay. All right, so let's just do one at a time.
Oh, I think we already approved one.
No. We approved to strike out part of one.
Oh, sorry, okay, I'm ahead of the.
We need a Venn diagram to explain where we are. So let's amend the motion to only be for number one and not one and two. So discussion on the floor for just one to be part of the goals. Do you want to pick up where you left off or you're good?
No.
Okay. I think with the new language, I'm very comfortable with it being a goal. For me personally, I'm recognizing as much as I'm a math person, sometimes anecdotal and qualitative data speaks volumes. So we'll be looking for, if we do decide to make this a goal, then we would be looking for reports back from the administration about how that's going. So I think it's a good addition. Go ahead, Stephanie?
I'm fine with approving number one the way it is.
Any other discussion?
I just want, I'm sorry, because I don't have this clear. Is there a student government advisor separate from student council?
No.
No. It's the individual grade advisors, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alex?
Nothing further to add.
Chris?
Does the middle and high school administration think this is a good goal to have?
I think it's worthwhile to try to improve how student government functions. And I think everything that's been mentioned is, is a worthwhile goal to shoot for.
I agree. I would like to set, to put on the table amending that to be a building level goal. This is more specific and narrow than the district level goals and it relates to only part of our school district at the building level. So I think it's a good goal to have and be committed to. I think that's where it belongs.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor that this becomes building level as opposed to district level. Discussion on that.
Sure.
Go ahead.
To be clear on this, we're looking to put this in as part of goal number two, not its own individual.
Correct, a task.
Yeah, it's going to be a task of, okay.
Mm-hmm. And I would just like to speak to the difference between it being a district goal versus a building level goal. The administration doesn't necessarily report back to us with all their building level goals, but they do report back to us on district level goals. So for me personally, I'd like, I'd like to see how this is going and I'd like to keep an eye on it. So for me personally, I would like to keep it as a district goal. Other discussion?
I don't mind it as a sub-district goal under number two, especially because we do have specific kind of building goals in a way, like Ivy Middle Years and things that don't always pertain to all three schools at once. I'm okay with it as long as it comes under, under the rubric number two.
Other discussion for the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor of making it building goal and not district goal, raise your hand.
It's okay.
All those opposed? All right, so the motion fails. So back to the original motion. All those in favor, any more discussion on, I think we went all the way around. Any additional discussion on having it be number two underneath on district?
I just want to note, because Chris is correct, so wouldn't the parentheses of M S H S suffice after it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of putting number one on the goals with just becoming a task under goal number two as amended?
It would then become E.
It would be E, yep. Any opposed? All right, so the second motion for discussion is about number two. I agree that it should go to the policy committee. But again, I'm interested in the progress on this. So the board wouldn't do the work. It would be basically a goal to have policy committee look at those fundraising policies and come to the board with a recommendation so that we can take action on it at that point. So I stand by the motion to put it under number two, recognizing that the legwork would be done by the policy committee. Stephanie?
I'm sorry, I would just have to ask, I mean, nobody might be able to answer. Is there something we're in violation of currently?
It reads.
And I'm not joking, I mean, it kind of reads like, I'm making it up. They, you know, maybe we can't sell cookie dough because it doesn't adhere to the wellness policy, but I don't think that's a violation of New York State regulations. So is that harsh or is it just, we're just trying to correct what we're?
I'm gonna defer to the author of the statement. Do you have some context around our current policies?
I don't have them in firmly, but from what I can recall reading them, there are two, maybe three, but I know for sure of two. And they, one contradicts the other in that the language says, one says that all fundraisers are approved by student council, one says all student fundraisers are approved by building principal. So there's a contradiction there. And, you know, I mean, I'm not a lawyer or a board member, so, I mean, are there violations? I, I mean, there are definitely wellness violations. We know, we all know that, that's like a word in your face. In addition to that, there could be other violations. I don't know, like, again, I don't know, you know, the federal regulations. But I know that there's been missing funds. I know that there's been, you know, fundraising during school hours. I know, you know, I mean, these are some, there are some violations. You know, don't, again, I would think of it as.
So then, I'm sorry, can I just ask one more question? Did someone read the current New York State Education Department regulations to see if they would, if we're voting to limit what we can do and then we're gonna be mad that we handcuffed ourselves?
Can I speak on that? Yeah, I mean, my suggestion really here is that, that I don't think we need two policies. I mean, we should just have one, you know, one fundraising policy. And I believe that should probably be a district-wide policy. And it should be in line with NICED regulations. It should be in line with the legal, federal, you know, policy, blah, blah, blah. But it should also have language that's specific to our district and to our kids and to our community's needs. There, you know, and also, you know, what are, you know, what are the funds being raised for? Is there, what's the cap? What's the minimum? What are, what are the timeframes? Is there a certain person, maybe a single point person, that is in charge of all fundraising? A master calendar, an application to fill out, you know, this is what we're raising funds for, blah, blah, blah. And again, this falls under, you know, there, this, this stuff is out there. We're not making this up. All we have to do is fall under the umbrella.
So if I, if I understand your line of questioning, you're just concerned about the compliance with the NYSED. So maybe similarly, like we did on the first one, revise official school fundraising policies and implement guidelines for students and advisors. And again, leave it open to the policy committee to bring them in line and bring us their recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, in the simplest form, yes. Because maybe somewhere in the NICED regulations, it says, if you have well water, you can't have a car wash. I mean, in the simplest restriction.
So that's the stuff that the policy committee wants to look at?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to strike to be compliant with existing school policies and current NYSED regulations. And we'll just give the policy committee the directive to look at our own internal school policies and look at NYSED policies and have that discussion at the committee level and bring their recommendation to the board. So the motion on the floor is to strike the restrictive language of to be compliant with existing school policies and current NYSED regulations.
Can I ask a process question? If you think that other language, it may say, before we vote on that and then vote on change of another language of another, to have like many, many votes, can we just have a little discussion about if there's any changes in things? Just to shorten the process?
Yep.
Instead of revise, should it be to review and potentially revise? Because this is assuming it needs revision. I don't know if it does or not. I mean, I know that it had been revised a little while ago. I know it had been reviewed by our attorney. We had many policies reviewed by Bosse's and I think this was one of them. So it sounds like there probably needs to be changes, but I don't want to, you know, I hate for a goal to have come to a conclusion already versus to review and potentially revise. Because if the committee came back and said, actually, it isn't compliant with everything, but now we have a goal that says we have to revise it. So let's change three words and now it's revised. You know what I'm saying? I just want to, I want to give that the policy committee the latitude to do ultimately what the right thing's gonna be.
Other discussion on the language?
I agree with Chris, but I'm gonna take it further. I don't, I just don't like having it as a goal. There's legal requirements that we have to review policy and I don't like, you know, putting it as a goal. I think it should be scrapped entirely.
That's the motion, that's the motion on the floor, right? Is that you can vote to not have it be a goal?
I want, yeah, right, okay.
Yeah. But we need to get the right language before we do that. So as far as language, the two things that we're talking about is changing it to review and revise and striking to be compliant with existing school policies and regulations.
I just have a question about what January is raising. Why wouldn't you have something that's a goal, that's, you know, something that's legally mandated? I mean, don't we have other things in terms of there's mandates around student achievement? For example, that's in here. Like, I guess I just don't, like, I agree with Chris's point completely and I think obviously there's a consistency issue, it needs to be reviewed and I agree with you when you say it needs to go to policy. I get it. What I don't understand is, what is your concern about it being mandated that it can't be a goal?
I just don't like, whether it's just the word compliant, which suggests that we're not compliant.
We struck that.
Yeah, so that's struck, right?
We're striking that.
Yeah.
So why can't we just review, just have it be that we're reviewing and making sure it's consistent and within, you know, our, whatever the issues were that came up in the last.
As a point of reference, we did, last year, the year before last, we had a goal to review the wellness policy and that was a district level goal. So we have had at different times, the only question I would have is, are there any other policies that we feel passionate and strongly about need to be reviewed this year for revision? If so, then should that be incorporated into this? To say, to like review and potentially revise these five things?
No, the motion on the floor is on the issue brought by the PTSA.
I'm saying, I don't know if anyone had any other policies they felt needed to be potentially reviewed and revised this year. If so, then perhaps it should be a goal that lists the three things that we, you know, I don't know.
You mean on any topic?
Any of the policies.
Our discussion is drifting from the point of order. So right now, there's an amendment to the motion that we revise the language of number two. And the motion right now is that it reads, review and revise the official school fundraising policies and implement guidelines for students and advisors to develop successful fundraising plans. The current motion on the floor is to adjust the language that it reads that way. Is there any other discussion on that motion on the floor? Go ahead.
To clarify, this is a charge that we would be giving to the policy committee.
Correct.
Cool.
Yep. Any discussion on that motion? Do you know where we are?
Yeah, you have a motion, but you'll second.
I second that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor of changing the language of number two?
Yes.
All right. So let's go back to the motion of adding number two underneath the same place as recommended. Number two of the goal, it's a task, so it would be F. All right, discussion on the motion on the floor?
You know my opinion.
Yes.
Are there any other policies that we would want to say we would like to be reviewed and potentially revised for this year? And I'm putting that out as a question. I'm not advocating for it because it ends up just gonna come up, I haven't really reflected on it. But I know that every year we've identified certain policies that we want the policy committee to go through on this. And so if we're going to have them focus on this, are there any others that we feel important?
Well, I, go ahead.
Because then I would add that to this.
There are like three specific policies that we have to review every single year.
Right.
There's a couple that are on a biannual. There's a couple that need to be reviewed three to five years. So I think that's why I'm saying to strike it totally and just leave it to the policy committee. Because there's numerous policies and some of them have legal implications and some are just internal.
Do we have two district policies on fundraising? I know, but I'm just asking those that.
Yes.
We do, we have two different ones.
They conflict.
And they, are they both currently then approved as policies? Because usually when you have an updated one, it replaces the old one. You don't, the old one doesn't exist in any of them.
This is what we would be asking them to look at.
I have a question too. And I recall when Wellness piece was on as a district goal and that is also mandated to be reviewed every year. But we still had it as a goal because I think it's just, it's communicating to the public that we're making this a priority. I agree with Chris, I'm not thinking off the top of my head other ones because we just did Wellness, which I know a number of us were.
There was a legal requirement.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, it was, yet it was a goal.
There were changes made to the state law. So it had to.
Right, I understand that, but it was still, we still had it as a goal because it was still a priority. So I think based on that, I'm okay with this being included in a goal for that reason, even though I completely understand what January is saying and that there's multiple policies that need to be. So it just, I think it just communicates that we heard the PTSD, get it in there, don't see any reason why not. I know there were some issues around it, so, you know, let's just get it done.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Alex, did you want to weigh in?
No, I have nothing further.
All right. All those in favor of putting the second one, as amended, underneath the tasks for the goals? So it would be F, raise your hand.
Can you just read it? Because I've lost track.
Yep, as amended is review and revise the official school fundraising policy and implement guidelines for students and advisors to develop successful fundraising plans.
I would, not potentially revise, I thought it was potentially revise.
Sure.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to tell the class what they have to do.
All right. Review and, you were right, that's what you, that's the motion that you originally did. So I'll read it again. Review and potentially revise the official school fundraising policies and implement guidelines for students and advisors to develop successful fundraising plans. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Somebody will revise these?
Mm-hmm. Yep. How you doing, Victoria? Did you get all that? All right, thank you very much. Let's move into public input, no, just kidding, superintendent report. Now, Katie's not here, but my understanding is that we can move right into the principals' report.
Okay.
Good evening. Just wanted to go over, I'll start with some past events. Some of this was touched upon, I believe, in prior board meetings. We got our summer camp, third college applications on the 28th and 29th. First day of school the 6th. College application night, which differed from the events of the 28th and 29th, was held on the 7th, which was more of an overview of the application process. The high school fall play auditions, the 11th and 12th. Our first conversations with administrators, I believe the 15th was Friday, is that correct?
Yep.
Those of you who don't know, conversations with administrators is an informal meeting that's held. that's held, I believe, once every, once every month, where parents are able to come into the school and ask questions in an informal environment. These are some pictures from the first week of school. Some middle schoolers. That's the sixth grade locker area, which is a pretty congested area. Kids are getting used to their lockers for a few days. Lunchroom, lunchroom. Upcoming school events. Ms. Cariero has the first sixth grade parent town hall meeting scheduled for the 20th in the Pearson Library at noon. Schools are closed the 21st and 22nd, Thursday and Friday, for Rosh Hashanah. Curriculum night at the high school is the, middle school, high school is the 26th. I believe the elementary school is the 28th. The PSAT is administered to 10th and 11th graders. The 11th grade administration is used to qualify for the National Merit Scholarship Competition. 10th grade is more practice. That's on the 11th of October. And homecoming, which Mr. Bramoff is in charge of organizing and does a wonderful job with his schedule for the 13th and the 14th. Betty?
Sure.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone, hello. Just to stand in place for Matt, he's not feeling well tonight. So some of the highlights from the elementary school past events. New student orientation was an opportunity for kids to come in and tour the building and also see their classrooms and meet with some teachers. New students who are entirely new to our district, they had the opportunity to be there. We had about 15 kids come in. And our guidance counselor, Mrs. Grant, handled that. First day kindergarten to fifth, pre-K meet and greet. I'm happy to say that there were no tears the first day of school with kindergartners. You always wonder how that's gonna go. Since then, there have been more tears. My daughter included, who started kindergarten, and she said, oh, the day's so long. So there's an adjustment period there, of course. After we shake, has begun. Standards of behavior was the assembly that Matt and I did together, just kind of talking about what the expectation is for the elementary school. It's done through all the grades. Everyone participates, including the teachers. And other than Matt and I starting the conversation, the kids really take responsibility for what the expectation is. And we present it on a PowerPoint and we'll hand it out to them later because they'll own it, because they're the ones that have come up with those things as far as the standards of behavior. The back to school picnic was a huge success. It was well attended. The weather was beautiful. We weren't sure for a little while, but it was very nice. Some highlights, some pictures, first day of school, 4K to 5. Let your, so sparkle is the theme. I just plugged it. So let your light sparkle is the theme and Sag Harbor shine, excuse me, for this school year. So you'll see there are bulletin boards throughout the building expressing the same thing. Again, this is the assembly that was held, some photos. Recession time, Mr. Malone playing football with the kids there. Thought that was great. And the back to school picnic, which was very well attended. I would say we had about 500 people at the school. And the PTA largely volunteers as far as cooking the food, giving out the food. And some teachers volunteer as well to help prepare the food. Mrs. Graves to the left coming to visit. And yes, that is a whale there next to the tree. Last year was a dinosaur, if you remember. Now there's a whale. And the kids lining up. We also had a performance. Janice Buckley came in and she sang some songs for about 45 minutes, did a concert, which was great. And then I thought this was neat. I turned the corner to find some sixth graders coming back to school like the second day that they had been at Pearson. And that was just a really sweet shot. It's always nice to see who returns, you know? And then the upcoming events, school closed, Rosh Hashanah, curriculum night, as Jeff mentioned, the 28th picture day, and then partners in class. Thank you. That's everything.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Good evening, everybody, for the athletics report tonight. It's a very busy time with regards to athletics. The fall season is our busiest season, so I did not get a chance to post many photos, if any, because there's just so many, so much things going on right now. Our parent meetings, our parent players' coaches meeting, especially at the middle school level, was very well attended. And this is the first opportunity for many seventh grade parents to really be introduced to the interscholastic athletic program that we offer. I think it was just a great, it was a great turnout. It really shows the value that everybody sees in our athletic programs, which we all view as an extension of the classroom. The varsity sports, parents, players, coaches meeting was also well attended, but slightly fewer parents, because I think they've heard it over and over again. But I was very excited to see the turnout this year. As Mr. Nichols alluded to, homecoming weekend is underway. There are many factors into, that goes into homecoming. One of them is what we can do and what that's gonna look like. I work with the PTSA. I also work with the administrative team. And I do take into account a lot of what the students are giving me in terms of feedback. We haven't had any tangible votes or anything, but as of now, I have a pretty good idea about what these students want that weekend to kind of look like. And I will bring that up to the PTSA and I'll bring that up to the administrative team. Spirit night is tentatively, we're planning way ahead here, but we're trying to get on the ball so everybody can mark it on their calendars. Tentatively, spirit night is, it's a huge night for our district. We decided that we're going to separate the first responders game. We're gonna do that another night. And spirit night is gonna be all about the kids of Sag Harbor and their winter sports. So tentatively, right now, again, that is subject to change. And Mr. Fisher will be up next. Oh, and one other thing. We had a tremendous volleyball tournament here on Saturday. We had seven teams. It was our third annual volleyball tournament. The event was wonderful, and I would like to thank all my staff for their wonderful help.
Good evening. Tech team's busy, of course, taking care of the everyday tech requests that are coming in. And again, this year, most of the teachers are doing it electronically, which is very helpful to us so that we can track it and make sure that things are being done as quickly as possible. We've had an opportunity to evaluate some of the placement of the Chromebooks. And we've already made a couple of changes to some of the locations where they're being housed now. For example, we've actually moved some to the middle school gym for use there. And we've gotten requests from the technology teacher in the basement, so we've added some Chromebooks down there for him to use with the students for instructional purposes as well. I had the opportunity to go before the two faculty meetings this year just to review basic use of the help desk system, both for the technology and maintenance. And at the superintendent's request, I'd like that all the faculty members, actually, all the staff members throughout the district, not just faculty, can post pictures too. So that as there are events taking place around the district, people can put them in one place. We have a cloud repository so that if there's a need for them to be put up on the boards or on the website or used for yearbook or whatever, we have one place so that anybody can feel free to drop pictures in there as well. I've had the opportunity to work with some faculty members over the past week or so. Some of the new teachers need to get their teacher websites off the ground for the first time. Others are making some editing changes to them. We've introduced Google Classroom to a few of the teachers at this point. And I expect the interest in that to continue to grow. We've had teachers, particularly at the elementary school, ask for assistance in creating group lists in their contacts so that they can email all the parents in one shot and not have to do that over and over again. And also provided access to some of the technology resources we have to some of the new teachers like Castle and some of the other programs that we're using.
Pardon me, Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move on, I have a request for the middle high school administration. And that is, when advisors are appointed to be grade level advisors, can an asterisk be put next to the name on that teacher list with the launching pad of the pages so the parents can see who they are? I just think it's really helpful. I think it was done with one of the teachers last year. But, you know, a lot of times, parents just don't know. And so the more we can do that, and also for the clubs itself, if there's could be like a list of who's running each club or something. There's a section, there's a whole section.
I think you said how to get Chris.
Oh, is that what that is?
Well, this is the site where the parents can go to to visit all the teacher web. It just happens to be the high school, there's a simple one for the middle school. But in the bottom corner, as those, as that information becomes available, we add it and we post it there so that parents will know who the club advisors are, who the class advisors are.
That's great, that's new.
And it'll link directly. We did that last year as well, I believe. At least for some of them, maybe not for all. But we'll try to, you know, make the effort to do them all.
That's right.
I just brought this up as a, just a quick screenshot. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, on the website, there's a link on both the parents and the student dropdown menus to bring you to a common page where all, they can access all the different websites for all the various teachers. So there's one for the middle school, one for the high school, and there's also one for the elementary school. But that's accessible from all the pages regardless of what building you're in. So even though you're on the Pearson page, you can still get to the elementary school teacher websites if you choose to. And this is just a quick example of working with one of the new teachers on her website. She has some nice motion going on there, but this is just a screenshot, so it doesn't come through quite the same.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to review a little bit of where we're at with the field outside, because we worked so hard on it this past year. And the athletic field is substantially complete. The total cost of the project is under budget. We actually allocated originally $673,500 for this work. And right now, with one change order for additional sprinkler heads, we're up to $633,600. So that's gonna allow us to take that $43,900 and put it towards our other project, which is the elementary school project that we're going to be, which got sent up to the state this month. We're hoping for approval the next few months. And we're hoping to have the practice fields, the elementary school, the courtyard, and the multipurpose court done next summer. So those funds will be in that project, just in case there's any price escalation. These are some great pictures of the field, and they were actually taken on a sunny day. So you can really see how beautiful it is. We had our first mowing, and the sod is growing. So the contractor's gonna come back and he's gonna do the next few mowings. The sod's knitting well, it's on schedule. It's four weeks into an eight-week process. They feel that it's definitely gonna be ready for the hope coming on October 12th. And after that, we're gonna evaluate whether or not it's gonna be ready for game use shortly thereafter. And this, it's hard to see, but that's the first mowing of our field. So part of the reallocation of the bond money included $50,000 for equipment to maintain the field. And we are going to be mowing the lawn after probably like the fourth mowing we'll do on our own. And we are going to be purchasing a new mower. Just, it's gonna be dedicated just for that field. So we are not gonna be bringing any weeds or seeds from the front field out to the back field. Hopefully, that'll help. We've contacted Greg Stanley from the bridge, and we sent him a whole bunch of cut sheets of different mowers that are on contract. And he recommended that we go with this mower, which is a 72-inch. Originally, we were looking at 60 inches and 104 inches. And he thought that 104-inch might actually be a little too heavy and it might actually compress the soil again. So we're gonna be purchasing this soon. And this is, this is coming out to a little over $12,000. So that'll come out at $50,000. Once we have the elementary school work done, we'll see whether or not we need to either buy a dedicated mower for that practice field or whether we should just purchase a trailer to transport this mower to that field. So when the time comes, we'll see what's gonna work better for us. And really, the big...
Can you ride that for 12 grand?
You probably could, over at the elementary school.
Can you get a canopy so you don't get sunburnt when you do?
Yeah, it's actually, the seat is very comfortable and everything's adjustable. And I think that, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a nice calming experience to mow that field.
That mowed the White House lawn wants to come over and run up and down.
I'm telling you, it's like washing dishes. It's like, you know, it's very calming, soothing. So I also wanna take a little time today to talk about the Suffolk Countywide Shared Services Plan. We mentioned it at previous meetings, but we really didn't go into the details. And on September 12th, I actually went to a meeting at the West Sable Country Club to adopt or vote on the draft plan, which is being, which was presented to the Suffolk County Legislature. So the 2018 New York State budget included an initiative that was designed to generate property tax savings among the various counties in the state. And Governor Cuomo is requiring every county to start a shared services initiative. And the shared services initiative was to develop a draft plan. So every county would have a draft plan. That plan was developed by a panel, a panel of local government and municipal officials. And the draft plan is supposed to be a launching point from which municipal leaders can begin to build a process of ongoing exchange of services, skills, equipment, and information sharing. So we are a member of the plan. School districts were not required to be part of the initiative, but we were invited. And I know that there was not a lot of buzz about this initiative in any of my circles or the serves. And thanks to Tommy John, he really introduced the concept of us joining. We are the first school district member to join the plan, and we are a voting panel member now. And there are three other school districts that followed along with us. And we hope that this is really gonna lead to a lot of intermunicipal sharing and tax savings going forward. So what was developed out of all of the panel meetings I attended was something called Suffolk Share. And Suffolk Share is the draft shared services plan for the county. And it's a 10-point plan that's meant to provide a platform for using modern technology and best practices to transition from incidental cooperative projects to a contemporary comprehensive approach to how local governments are gonna share services going forward. So I'm gonna not go through each point, but I'm gonna go quickly through the 10 points. And the first item is the development of a web portal. And the web portal is really going to be like a virtual municipal service store. It's gonna have a menu of municipal services that everyone can share. I'll show you what the menu looks like a little later on. But all of Suffolk County's 10 towns have gotten together to apply for a grant to develop this web portal. So hopefully, that'll get off the ground soon.
Is there some question about that?
Yep.
Is that a portal for them to use internally or a public portal?
No, it's for all of the local governments who are panel members and who are participating in the plan. We're all gonna be using this web portal.
It's an internet for all the members to use, not a public website?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
And also, so number two, intermunicipal services. It's gonna be an assortment of services that will be offered to participating municipalities. They have developed an intermunicipal agreement, which is really a contract. And that contract, right now, our attorney reviewed the contract. He gave us some feedback. And all of the attorneys will provide feedback individually and will send that feedback up to the county to develop a template that's gonna cover every type of local government. There is also going to be an audit process. So while we're using the services and sharing the services, we're gonna have to have some sort of audit committee that's gonna identify and quantify the savings achieved by the shared services. Because ultimately, what we would like to do is apply for a matching grant from the state. And the Department of State is supposed to develop an application where we could go ahead, and methodologies where we could go ahead and apply for that grant money. They think, right now, they're projecting that over two-year period, this would save Suffolk County governments upwards of $37 million. So it is a lot of money. There's gonna be a data analysis part of the plan. And really, it's just gonna be, you know, measuring performance, measuring savings. There's something called MuniChat, which is really nice. Municipal representatives are gonna be able to share information, brainstorm, highlight success stories. There's gonna be a newsletter. It's gonna, the newsletter will provide a lot of how-to, how to use the web portal, how to use the store, how to use all the features of Suffolk Share. And then number eight and number nine is really county to county sharing. So there's a lot, there's a lot in the plan that just applies to counties. Number 10 is interesting. Number 10, they're going to develop an Office of Intermunicipal Cooperation. So what they plan on doing is reassigning some of the county employees, some of the current... So what they plan on doing is, uh, reassigning some of the county employees, some of their current positions, and they're going to be reassigning them, um, jobs as part of the Office of Intermunicipal Cooperation. And, um, that's going to help us all get together and stay organized and coordinate all of our monthly subcommittee meetings. So, um, as I mentioned earlier, school districts were not required to join, but we joined on July nineteenth. And we have participated in the development of the plan from the beginning, um, and we hope to save our taxpayers' money going forward. Um, just to remind everyone that currently, I have it there, the draft, the draft plan, we're going to put on, place online, so you should be able to access it, um, by the end of this week. But currently, this is what we're currently sharing. And, um, Sag Harbor does a really great job of trying to generate revenue whenever we can. Um, we don't include our education service contracts on here because that's really not sharing per se. But we have intermunicipal agreements with Wayne Scott School District for transporting all of their students for the ten-month school year in the summer. We also maintain agreements with Sagaponic and Bridge Hampton. We transport their students to private parochial, parochial and summer programs. Um, and the district also shares bus mechanic and purchases its fuel with the Southampton, uh, School District through another two agreements. And we also, um, are part of the BOSI's Cooperative Bidding Program, the Educational Data Purchasing Cooperative, and we piggyback on Suffolk County contracts whenever we can. So our proposed plan, and these are right now are our menu items that we have added to the plan. Um, we hope going forward that we would be able to share some of our computer tech support to our neighboring municipalities. Um, we still will be able to, um, we can fit a couple more students on our buses to parochial schools. So if there's any neighboring school districts that would like us to do that, we can do that. Um, also, we would like to go into a cooperative bidding arrangement for skilled trade services. We do spend a lot of money on the skilled trades, and they're very hard to find being all the way on the East End. Um, and even look into maybe sharing the costs to employ, um, skilled tradespeople going forward. That's something else that we could look into doing. This is what some of the other, um, menu items are that you would see. Uh, you see the town of Brickhaven, Suffolk County, uh, Public Works, Town Riverhead. They are all, um, they all added services to the menu that they would be willing to share. Some of these items are definitely things we'd be, we would be interested in. Um, automotive repair, uh, snow blowers. Uh, you know, there's a lot of services on here for fuel purchasing, asphalt. You know, we have a lot of sidewalks that need to get fixed. So this is something that we could, you know, shop from going forward. And this is the article that was in Newsday, um, that discussed the meeting that we had on September 12th, where Steve Balone was there and all the county officials. And, um, they, the plan was voted, the draft plan was voted thirty-four to zero. And, um, the next step now is to, um, take the draft and kind of just vet it out through attorneys and then finalize the plan from there. So, if anybody has any questions?
Yes, I don't understand what you're going to do that the plan, shared services folks, that they're going to save thirty-seven million dollars.
That Suffolk-
Give me one example.
That's Suffolk Countywide.
Suffolk County, I know. Suffolk County is going to save thirty-seven million dollars. Just one example. I'm really lost.
Well, I think they realize that there's a lot of duplication in, um, you know, from town to town, village to village, you can, um, city to city. And they're really trying to get rid of or reduce that duplication in trying to acquire services. Also, a lot of the towns, they have very big highway departments. So they, they could provide services like snow removal. They could provide, um, uh, street repair, sidewalk repair services. There's a lot of things in here. Um, one of the towns has their own print shop, so other municipalities could use their print shop. So there's, there's things that they have that I think a lot of people don't realize that they do in-house, and they're willing to come up with a price list and share those services with the other municipalities.
Okay, but-
So it would be a lower cost than going to a private event.
I get it. It's, it's like all of us buying, buying our paper from W.B. Mason instead of Staples and saying we want a twenty percent off if we all switch to it. I get that. But because of where we are located, is someone really going to come out and help us shovel snow from Suffolk County?
I think it depends right now.
And I, I'm not picking on it. It's just a pretty big number that goes on video.
It is.
Suffolk County to save thirty-seven million. I, I, you know, I-
It is. It's a very large number, and you have to realize that in every municipality, seventy percent of our costs are personal service costs and benefits. So this is really saving on the perimeter of those costs. Um, you know, there are a few municipalities actually looking at the Suffolk County Health Plan because their health plan right now is roughly about twenty-one thousand, and the state plan, um, some of the state plans are up to twenty-eight thousand. So there is a lot of idea sharing, which is nice, because when you walk into the room, I was surprised I didn't see a lot of other school districts. But you do see all of the, um, you know, I saw the purchasing agent from the town, and, and he was really, you know, the things he had to say, um, were very interesting and were very helpful. And I think that, uh, we all have our own best practices in-house, and now maybe we could share some of those ideas together.
Sag Harbor is ahead of the curve. That's why you were there.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, you ever had a question?
Sorry, on the shared services. I just had a quick question on the effect of, um, our purchasing policy, because we have to update that every year. Has there been any sort of discussion how the Board of Education deals with the purchasing policy?
Well, last year, um, we actually, the policy committee, the first year the policy committee was run, um, I think by Katie, that she chaired it, we did all business office policies. So the business office policies were all vetted that year. Um, I attended all the meetings. And one of the policies was purchasing. Purchasing is huge, of course, in our school district, and there's a lot of law that we have to follow. Our purchasing policy is great because it does include, um, it does, it does include paragraphs and, um, on best value, on piggybacking. It authorizes us to actually do that, and it really does, um, provide us with the freedom to use a lot of different methods to save money. Um, and it, a lot of policies, unfortunately, in local government, sometimes the policy actually handcuffs the purchasing agent because they, even though they have more leeway in the law, their policy actually, you know, tells them that they're restricted from doing this, this, and this. And our policy is not like that, which is wonderful, because it really does help us in the business office and purchasing agent to find the best way to do things and to save, you know, as much money as possible. So our purchasing policy, I think, is fantastic.
Any other questions for Jennifer on shared services?
No, it, it's just a, a comment. This, this gives the Sag Harbor School District a lot more options in our purchasing. And when this was in the offing, it, it seemed like an excellent opportunity to, you know, maybe get involved with the local towns, municipalities, to see what comes out of it. Uh, this is new, you know, and, uh, it's going to take a year or two to, to, to see how the thing flushes out. And, you know, I'm, I'm hoping for, you know, for great things. And so is the governor. This really is his baby. He, he pushed this through the legislature, uh, last spring in an effort to stop duplicating services. And I think there's some interesting things for us on there.
Mm-hmm. I think, you know, it's really nice to be able to meet with, um, people from other local governments and just be able to just talk about, you know, what kind of problems are we're coming into when we're trying to purchase things. And, um, it's not, it's great for information sharing especially. But, um, I go to the meeting every week, so everyone says there's a meeting. And, um, I'm going to be attending the legal and finance, uh, meetings going forward. And Tom is going to be attending the, um, tech, the technology and programming meetings, um, every other week. The one, so every other week I'll be attending a meeting, and every other week he'll be attending a meeting.
Where are they? Do they rotate?
They're in the Suffolk County DPW.
In the same place every time?
Yeah, they have them there all the time.
Where are they?
Um, it's a Yap Pack. It's right near the, uh, the collections, right next door. Uh, so just a quick cafeteria update. These are our vending machines. We have them all up and running. We have three of them right now. Um, they're, they're wonderful because we do own them. We control everything that goes into them. Um, you can see that there was definitely something put in here that, uh, was no-no.
There's a cheese in there. I see it a mile- Susan, there's a cheese in there.
They have to be moved.
And I think that second row from your left got Oreo cookies.
No, no, no. These are not Oreo cookies. This is like, uh, muscle, muscle milk or something it's called.
Oh, I'm sure I could find something wrong with that.
Well, the good thing is I can, we can open up the machines immediately if we find that there was something that got stuck in, stuck in. That shouldn't have been there.
No, I'm not saying anything else.
But they're doing really, they're, they're excellent. They actually, um, they accept credit card, they accept Apple Pay, they accept cash, of course. Um, I get a report, um, on a daily basis of how much money the machines are bringing in. I think the first week we started using them, um, we're bringing in about a hundred dollars a day, and that was the first week. So I'm sure it's going to, um, increase as people are here in the evenings, going to clubs, going to events. Um, and then the whole, we're, I know that we had a question about whether or not it's going to eventually talk to the students' NutriKids accounts. And, um, that's where we definitely would like to be. So hopefully, by next year, we'll have a mechanism where the students can put a PIN number into the machine, and it would actually access the funds, um, in their account. But participation is up this year. Mm-hmm.
Um, so there, I assume there's fruit available for purchase in the cafeteria, right?
Yes.
Is there any possibility that these vending machines could ever be used for fruit, or can we?
There definitely is. They're all refrigerated, and, um, we have a lot of options going forward with the vending machines. The thing is, is, um, this was a huge task to get off the ground. And, um, we're hoping, the first week, we just kind of like wanted to get them filled up. Um, but going forward, we, we can stick, you could put sandwiches in there. You could put, um, if, since they're all refrigerated, you could put anything. As long as we have staff who can go ahead and, um, kick stocking them.
I'm sorry, Jennifer, not to be funny, but who fills them? We do?
Our lunch people. Uh, Tom, our lunch people, we all go ahead and we fill them.
So we, we fill them ourselves. So, uh, uh, not to be ridiculous. Last question I'll ask. If you wanted to put oranges in one of the machines, it's, it's suited to, to dispense whatever fits in there when you press A1?
Yes. Really, um, a lot of those, uh, shelves, I guess, are adjustable. Um, we set the amount and the price for every single item.
And you could fill with what you want?
And you could fill it with anything.
That makes sense.
So, um, eventually, maybe when the sports season gets really busy, we may be able to put a grab-and-go sandwich in there, or a salad, or a lunch, or something. So there's a lot of packaging options also for us. Um, participation this year so far has been wonderful, thanks to our very large middle school, uh, class, the sixth graders. They're really participating. Um, we are trying new things on the menu this year. Uh, we do have Meatless Mondays. Um, and they had a three-bean burrito today, which hopefully was very good. I didn't get a chance to, uh, taste it myself. But, um, all in all, the program is off to a really great start. And, um, we're going to be actually interviewing for, uh, a new staff person on Friday. So we're trying to hire another food service worker. And that'll be, you know, Friday, we should know, and then the next board agenda will appoint Saladi to give them a hand.
Jennifer, in terms of those machines, it was a, I had a big dinner at my house Friday. It was a big point of discussion. They were, I mean, and change is hard for kids. They've been used to seeing different kinds of things in there, so some get excited, some don't. But perhaps that's one of the things in the school where it'd be helpful to get feedback from students of what they, you know, that, that like, what healthy, if, if there's like ten different things you're considering, even just getting feedback, you know, maybe a survey they can take while they're in the cafeteria or whatever.
Oh, definitely. I think once we, um, we have, you know, the vendors that we use regularly. And, um, we're going to just meet with our vendors, see what the options are. We have a whole list of really healthy options that the wellness committee could vet, and then we could have students vote on the things that they like the most. And we could also, um, you know, work that way. But because we own the machines, um, we can do anything at this point with them. So, which is nice. We have a little more freedom.
Thank you. Um, I think we tackled that one. Um, so at this point, let's move on to the consent agenda. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Diana, can I just, uh, mention something on number four, just to clarify? It says January thirteenth to August thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. It's, I went back in backup, and it is, um, January thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Did everybody get that? On page two of the agenda, number four, she's adding the year, two thousand seventeen, to follow January thirteenth. Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items one through four?
Sub moved.
Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve policy action number five?
Sub moved.
Second cut.
Discussion? All those in favor? Um, any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve business items six through sixteen?
Sub moved.
Second? Thank you. Discussion?
Uh, where is number sixteen's trip? Approved girls varsity cross-country trip.
Brown University.
Brown, the university.
Any other discussions?
Um, I had a question about item number eleven, about the Transportation Fleet Capital Reserve Fund. Um, so I'm so glad to hear Jennifer, because you probably know all this in your head. The, um, at the end of two thousand seventeen, we had one point eight million in that fund, correct?
Um, the Transportation Fleet Capital Reserve, at the end of, before the last budget vote where we increased it, there was four hundred thousand in that fund. Then, um, May sixteenth, during the budget vote, the voters approved an increase to that fund up to two million dollars.
Right.
So, um, before the end of the year, and before the auditors came in and closed out our books, I put a resolution on to set aside, if available, up to five hundred thousand in capital reserve, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand in repair reserve, and up to seven hundred and fifty thousand in fleet capital reserve. So-
So it's all three of those reserves added up, get to be the two million?
Um, no, actually, all those reserves, some of them have more than two million in them, some of them have less. But right now, what happens is our books are closed, and the auditors are now going through our financial statements. Um, they're going to actually be here at the next business meeting, October twenty-third. They're going to go through the, um, they're independent auditors. They'll go through the audit report, go through the financials. We will review with everyone, um, what the results of operations were. So right now, it looks as though our results of operations are allowing us to put an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand into that fleet capital reserve, when originally, before the books were closed and audited, we thought we would only have seven fifty put in. So that's why this is being amended.
Got it. We have extra money. Now-
Yes.
If, if there's extra money, is this, could it only go into this, or could it be used for other things?
We, um, we adopt a reserves plan every November. So last November, we went through a reserves plan, and we approved all of the balances, and we discussed which reserves we would be putting funds into. So the only reserves that, um, right now, we could put money into is the capital reserve, the repair reserve, and now the transportation reserve. Um, all of our other reserves are very well-funded. Our retirement reserve is, um, was actually overfunded, and we've been using some of that retirement money every year. Our unemployment reserve is good exactly. The funding for the unemployment reserve is just perfect based on our rate of unemployment. Um, our workers' compensation reserve is also well-funded. We have an insurance reserve, which is really nice to have. Just think, you know, just in case we ever get hit with, um, any sort of liabilities that aren't insured. Um, that's very well-funded. All of our reserves are very well-funded. We were able to put the four percent of unreserved fund balance aside. And, um, the only place we really had to put additional funds was in the transportation reserve, which really wasn't well-funded. Our transportation reserve for years only had four hundred thousand dollars, which is really for big buses.
And I'm just asking, because I think when people see that, they may think, well, why wasn't it used for something else, or returned to the taxpayers? But it really has to be applied to a fund, reserve fund.
Yes, and there is no other fund that we actually had that, that we could put that money in.
Right.
The auditors would tell us, oh, this, you know, this is overfunded. This was only authorized for this amount. This was, um, going forward, a couple of months for May, what, um, I think I would like to do is take that capital reserve, which right now, our capital reserve has a little over two million dollars in it. Um, we've been putting five hundred thousand dollars into it at the end of every year. That's what we're authorized to do. And I'd like to just get that increased, just because, um, cap, just because of our building condition survey, there's millions and millions of dollars worth of capital cost, and if we could actually pay for those capital costs with our reserve money and not have to, um, have the taxpayers have to worry about, um, any sort of increased taxes for that, that would be, that would be great. So-
But we can't, we can't put this money into that because the cap already exists there, so we have to change the cap, and we can't do that now.
No, we have to do with voter approval. So the voters will have to approve that. Um, so what we're going to do is in October, we'll go through an explanation of where there were increases and decreases in certain appropriation lines. And, um, we'll also, um, then from there, we'll start planning our, updating our multi-year plan, and then we'll be updating our reserves plan again for this November.
Right. It makes a lot of sense. I just wanted to clear that up, because people see that and sometimes think, well, why don't you use it for X or Y?
No, we can't. We're very, very restricted on our reserves.
Thank you for that. It was clear.
Jennifer, you mentioned the building conditions. Jennifer, you mentioned the building condition survey. Would you give us a quick primer on what that is?
Well, our building condition survey is a survey of all of our district's buildings, excluding Stellamaris, so the elementary school and Pearson. It includes a lot of health and safety items. It includes a lot of items that we know are deteriorating. It also includes some wish list items, such as sidewalks and areas where, you know, there really isn't a path for children to get to the buildings. So, this, the building condition survey, right now, you know, I think it's upwards of over 5 million dollars' worth of repairs district-wide. And they are prioritized. It's over a five-year period, and they're prioritized based on health and safety. So, I know that a lot of the smaller things, a lot of the smaller repairs or fixes, we were able to do within the budget. And we did budget for a lot of those repairs to be done this year. But a lot of the bigger plans, like we have a, there's, our systems, our fire alarms system, our, you know, our safety, security systems in the buildings itself need to be upgraded. That's a big dollar expensive item in the building condition survey. But it really is a guide for us to use and prioritize, like what, what is the next thing we really need to fix? And that gets updated every year also. So, we're going to be working on that in the committees. And then we're going to be bringing all of the recommendations to the board.
Perfect.
Thank you. This is something that we've been working with in the educational facilities planning committee. And I just wanted, you know, that little bit to be out there. Thank you, Jennifer.
Any other discussion on the items six through 16?
Question, number 15, the GSA club. I know that there was a recommendation to change the name of that club.
Yes, there was.
How far did we get on that, Victoria?
On changing the name?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
There were, yeah, that, I do believe that that recommendation went back to our attorney to have that changed in the.
The memo of agreement still says.
Yeah, it needs to be changed in the actual contract. So, we may see an amendment in the future, changing the name of that. But that was brought to our attention as well. Any other items? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstains? All right, can I get a motion to approve personnel actions 17 through 27?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Next item on the agenda is for discussion, the committee's membership. So, that should be on your desk as well. And Tommy John pointed out an amendment, which I appreciate, oh, I think I gave it to you, Victoria. I've got another one here. Claire Claire, and I'm sorry I didn't catch it. The Village Board Liaison is Chris Teis. So, if he could make a change on your agenda. Whaling Museum, I'll do that one. And we need to add the last one, which is Legislative Liaison. And that's going to be Tommy John's doing. So, three changes under the liaisons. Any discussion on the committees?
I just had a discussion. There was another committee that I'd also hoped to, so then, but just don't have the time. Is there a way that, you know, are we going to also be able to provide some input and feedback to particular, like I'm thinking of transportation, for example?
Absolutely.
So, there'll be a way for us to do that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and what I would recommend is that the person who's actually serving on the committee, make sure you're just in contact with them and collaborate with them. So that whatever the needs or concerns are that you have, that it's communicated. If you don't have time to go. Go ahead.
I'm only on one committee, which I would never complain about not being on more committees. But I noticed a few people are like on four committees. So, if someone felt like they had too much, I could pick another one up. I'm not advocating for the change. I'm just offering, if someone's on four committees, that might be a lot for someone. So, that's, I'm just letting that out there as.
And what I did is just what people asked for.
Right. So, if someone has more than what they want, and they want to change it, let me know. Because it can be after the meeting.
And also, I think part of the understanding is that if, if I, if I'm a liaison and I can't make a meeting, or if I'm on it and somebody wants to go my step, or something like that, I think those are completely appropriate.
In terms of the committees, it looks like we have most of the slots filled, but are we still missing some members on some of them? Or are they all, we, they're all pretty much, we have all the people that we need?
Or number six on athletic committee, is that what you're saying, with is a blank?
What that is, is when, from last year, if somebody said, I'm not interested in serving anymore, they, the slot's still there, but they, this was a Google Doc that everybody was kind of working with.
But did somebody take that spot if they?
Yeah, we, we sent out multiple emails for people to volunteer.
I know.
So, and we did get a lot of response from people. It was great.
Did we get responses from people asking to be on committees, but they weren't put on committees? You know, the public? Or everybody who kind of, any parent committee member set up, like, you know, committee group's getting on them?
Yeah.
That's great. And it's, thank you to everybody for being willing to commit their time and energy to this. Committee work is important.
Any other discussion?
I have a question on the shared decision-making. How come there is no space for parents? Or just that people didn't want to be on the committee, or?
Jeff, do you want to field that question?
Well, are you referring to the building-level shared decision-making team?
Yes.
So, I'm not sure what you're looking at. But I sent out an email to the PTSA last week requesting two parent members for each, both the middle school and high school committee. And your question is?
No, I was just wondering why there's no, or there's no, like, for like.
I got a response today.
Oh, today?
With potential members.
So, perhaps we shouldn't be voting on that yet today, that maybe the next meeting for those? Because it sounds like we would want to vote on it when we have those names.
Do you have those names? Can we add it to our list?
No, I have to go through them. But I got, I got a, an email from Diane Bucking today with some names.
Okay.
Is that how it works as well, Ms. Renezo, with the elementary school level? You get emails and people say they want to serve on the shared decision-making?
From what age? I believe that is the way.
Okay.
So, I mean, we try to, we try to go through the PTSA, so it's viewed as objective.
So, I, I think the question is a process question. Previously, we haven't had shared decision-making on our list of committees and liaisons. And so, for me, it always kept going underneath the radar as far as something that people could volunteer for. And so, I asked that it be added to the list. And so, there might be a little bit new process here. And maybe we should revisit whether that needs to be on this list, or whether that just stays at the administrative level and we don't add names to it. And I just, I just felt like I keep forgetting that it's there.
Diana, I think it's good to have it on the list, because I think there was, it's also something that's mandated, is what I understand.
It is.
But I think that they didn't happen last year, right?
They did.
At all levels?
Didn't shared decision-making meetings take place last year?
No.
Oh, no, it didn't happen. So, I think it's good to have it here.
Okay.
Diana, I think that the, maybe what you might need to alter, there's a minimum or maximum. If you just added the numbers, I'm making it up. If there were five people max and two spaces are taken up, and you add three, four, and five, that we can go ahead and approve this, knowing that we might slide someone in. Which is exactly what we just discussed about, right? But I don't know if, I'm making that up. I don't know what the maximum or minimum capacity on.
Dude, is there a maximum number of?
So, the typical makeup of a shared decision-making committee at the middle school and high school, I don't want to speak for the elementary school, is two faculty members, two parent members, a minimum of one administrator, and two students.
So, I think if we, if we amended that here, then we could move ahead.
So, if you're, you're suggesting that we make a motion to put in the blank spots and let them fill them later?
Correct. Yes, this way you can approve and keep this moving and allow whomever Jeff deems to slot in, in the empty slots. So, I, the way I heard it was two parents, one administrator, two students.
Two faculty. Two faculty. Yeah.
So, the fact that, right now, are you guys looking at what we're looking at?
I don't think we are.
Right now, it says.
Did you have access to the shared document that Katie sent out to all the administrators?
Yeah, that's unfair. Right now, the shared decision-making in the high school is Jeff Nichols and Mike, which means that you're sharing only with one another.
Yeah, I'll just grab it back at the end, but this is.
We have it, it's our.
Is that the same thing?
Yeah.
So, if we expand that, Jeff, to a potential of two additional, two parents added to this list, two students, two faculty, you're okay.
Yeah, I'm forwarding you guys an email, the whole email chain, the last couple of days with advertising the committee makeup to the various constituencies that I need volunteers from. So, you'll be able to see it.
Does it need to be a district-wide shared decision-making? Is it, or is it always building?
There needs to be a district-wide.
There needs to be district.
I thought legally, there has to be a district-wide. That's why I'm asking. Because we, we used to have them. And I thought the law required it.
And that's not the board? I'm just kidding.
So, so, do we have a process set to create that? If not, then maybe that can, you can get the ball rolling in that, since that's legally required.
All right, we'll look into that. Thanks for bringing that up. That's a surprise to me.
The last district shared services committee was updated in 2006.
Ah, got it.
That's okay. Shared decision-making.
That's the one you were talking about.
For the district.
So, Diana, by voting on these, we're not precluding anyone who might come out to volunteer on these committees. They're still open for volunteers.
Well, and I think that comes back to like a process standpoint. I, I do believe that we need to adopt which board members or liaisons and which administrators are, are participating as chairs and whatnot. But I think that the, I don't know, I think for most of our charters, we say that people are on for three years. I'm just, I'm reluctant to table this, just because I feel like.
Yeah, that's why my.
I don't think you should table it. We don't want to slow this down.
Exactly.
It's, we're in September, which is really a good place. It's almost like we're out of ourselves for once. And it's going to be Thanksgiving before we know it. So, I would just keep this moving.
Okay.
So, I, can you go back to my motion to motion?
Yep, yeah.
I'll second your motion.
The motion on the floor is to fill in slots for the high school and middle school shared decision-making committee and possibly the district.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to, why wouldn't you leave the elementary school open as well? I understand that that might have a different criteria, but I'm sure that there are other people going to slot in there too.
Right.
So, so, the idea being that we'll, we'll approve this moving forward, understanding that there may be, there may be changes.
Additions.
Additions.
Right, you have a second.
Additions.
Yes.
All right. Any discussion for the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Something you want to add?
Yeah, just that, I think it would, it would be helpful as a board to talk about, amongst Justin for tonight. And maybe it's just the email to you that can get sent to the chairs, but just what some of the board's goals might be for some of these committees? Because sometimes I've seen committees that will go in a direction, but it doesn't necessarily align with what the board felt was a priority, or aligned with the goals per se. So, it might be helpful to at least say, hey, if you can tackle this, we think that this is a real priority, whether it's for wellness, or this, or that. I mean, some are more evident than others, you know, the facilities committee, they have their tick listed.
Right.
But with some of the other committees that are broader, sometimes, at least, I would, I'm on the athletic committee, I'd love to know, you know, for the rest of the board, if they think there's some priorities for that committee, as an example.
Right. And I, and I think that some of that stuff comes up when we discuss, like, for example, we talked about policy tonight, that we want the policy committee to tackle. And so, if there's, if there's things that are in alignment with our goals that we feel like needs to be kicked down the committee, then public session would be the time to do it.
Maybe we can get that, you know, in the next month or so, to have a conversation? That'd be great.
All right, where are we in the agenda? Old Business. Anybody have anything they want to bring up, Old Business? Hey, Public Input 2. Anybody for Public Input 2?
Did we adopt the goals overall? I thought we made, we added a thing to a goal. Did we adopt the entire goal, or just the added goal?
Same with you. I think you're right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the goals as amended. Thank you, Chris.
So moved.
Discussion?
I have a question about it.
Oh, gosh, I thought we were going to get out of here by 8:30. I'm sorry.
We're good, we're good.
These are different goals, okay?